Okay, ready? Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please? Counselor Clements?
Present.
Counselor Langvin?
Present.
Counselor Markucci?
Present.
Counselor McDonald?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Pellican? Counselor Regis?
Present.
Counselor Vandal?
Present.
Eight present? Three, consider and accept the council reorganization minutes of Monday, July 9th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? Okay, we have a roll call on that, please. Counselor Langvin?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
(coughing)
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Eight yes? Thank you. Consider and accept the council minutes of Monday, July -- the council minutes of Monday, July 9th, 2012.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Please show the record that Counselor Pellican is here. Okay. Okay, no discussion. Can I have a roll call, please, on Agenda Four? Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Langvin?
Yes.
Nine yes? Thank you. There are some seats down here in the front if people would like to sit. I recommend that you do so. Okay. Agenda item number five, Subcommittee Reports, A General Government. Prior to even discussing Subcommittee Reports, I'm going to announce the Subcommittee's. The counselors have all received this already, but for everybody else, General Government, Chair Pamela Regis, counselors David Langvin and Amelia Pellican will be on that committee. Department of Public Works, the Chair will be Counselor Conrad Vandal, with counselors Darlene Markucci and Amelia Pellican as members of that Subcommittee. Protection of Persons and Property, the Chair is Counselor David Langvin, with counselors Pamela Regis and Larry McDonald as members of that Subcommittee. Education and Human Services, Counselor Darlene Markucci is the Chair, Sean Moriarty and Denise Clements are on that Subcommittee. Planning and Development, Counselor Denise Clements is the Chair, and counselors Sean Moriarty and Larry McDonald are on that Subcommittee. As of tomorrow, that is the last day that any citizen members that were on the previous Subcommittees would be considered members of those Subcommittee's. If anybody is interested in joining or becoming a part of any of these Subcommittee's, you will have to, whether you've been on them or not in the past, you do have to go to the Town Hall and pick up a letter, fill it out, and you can drop it off there, and we will get it to the correct Subcommittee's. And now I will go into Subcommittee Reports. A General Government is Counselor Regis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. B, DPW Counselor Vandal.
Thank you. A meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, July 25th, 2012, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Subcommittee Members Counselor Markucci, and Counselor Pellican. Also in attendance was Counselor Regis, Town Manager Clark, and DPW Director Tom Dealey. I call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number seven, discuss and vote to accept Amendment Number Five for Continued Wastewater Treatment Facilities and Operation and Maintenance Services, beginning August 1st, 2012 through July 31st, 2012. In accordance with the terms of the amendment agreement attached, Mr. Clark gave an overview of the subject matter stating, Viola approached him to extend the contract. Viola has been with the town for over ten years, and Mr. Clark and Mr. Dealey would like to extend the contract for an additional three years to see us through the current ongoing water protection control permit issues through EPA. The contract calls for 1% increase in year one and between 2% to 5% increase in years two and three. The contract also allows for a revenue sharing component of compost sales and takes into account the new middle high school pump station at no additional cost to the town. Counselor Pellican questioned Item Five of the contract, which states blended escalator of 40% CPI-U Boston and 60% CPI water sewer and trash indices. But a letter from Viola states, Mr. Clark said he would check into this but believes it was an error in the agreement and should be the 65% CPI-U Boston and 35% CPI water sewer and trash indices. A motion was made by Counselor Markucci and seconded by Counselor Pellican with a favorable recommendation to council to ratify Amendment Five to the agreement with Viola for Continued Wastewater Treatment Facilities and Operations and Maintenance Services beginning August 1st, 2012 through July 31st, 2015. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Markucci and seconded by Counselor Pellican. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 7:25 PM. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Agenda item 5C is Education and Human Services, and that would be Counselor Markucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Meeting of the EHS Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, July 24th, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairwoman Markucci, counselors Moriarty, and Counselor Clem --
Me. That was me.
Counselor Pellican.
Yeah.
Also in attendance were counselors Regis, Counselor Langvin, Town Manager Clark, Michael Trombley, and Counselor Clements was excused. Called the meeting to order at 6:30. Agenda item number one, discuss and vote to approve change order number eight between the Town of Southbridge and Consigly Construction for a no-cost change order for the rendering of an extension of substantial completion for the middle high school. Mr. Clark stated, "We are coming to the end of the project. It should be completed on July 30th, 2012, and the building turned over to the town on August 7." The grounds will be turned over to the town as they are completed. A motion was made by Counselor Pellican, seconded by Counselor Moriarty, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve change order number eight between the Town of Southbridge and Consigly for a no-cost change order for the rendering of an extension of substantial completion for the middle high school project. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Agenda item number two, discuss and vote to approve change order number nine between the Town of Southbridge and Consigly Construction in the amount of $19,291 as described in memo attached and dated 7/16/12. Mr. Clark said this is for continued work being done. A motion was made by Counselor Moriarty, seconded by Counselor Pellican, with a favorable recommendation to council to approve change order number nine between the Town of Southbridge and Consigly Construction in the amount of $19,291 as described in the memo attached and dated 7/16/12. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Agenda item number three, vote to authorize the school business manager to enter into contracts for purchase of equipment related to the media center and media classroom for the middle high school in the amount of $120,000. Set funding to come from two sources, one, school technology budget up to $60,000, and two, cable committee capital fund in the amount of $60,000. Set amount also being approved by the cable committee. Mr. Clark stated that this is the final budgeting from the school budget. Counselor Pellican clarified that the media center is actually the library and the media classroom is actually the studio. A motion was made by Counselor Pellican, seconded by Counselor Moriarty, with a favorable recommendation to council to authorize the school business manager to enter into contracts for the purchase of equipment related to the media center and the media classroom for the middle high school in the amount of $120,000. Set funding to come from two sources. I had already stated that earlier. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Agenda item number four, discuss and vote to approve the agreement between Jennifer Reynolds and the Town of Southbridge for aerobic classes for citizens age 60 at the community center, 144 classes over the course of one year in the amount of $6,000 payable in 48 weekly payments of $125. Mr. Trombley said the funding for these classes come from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and the rates have not changed for a number of years. That's probably about ten years she has not gone up in any of her fees. There are 25 to 42 participants per class. A motion was made by Counselor Pellican, seconded by Counselor Moriarty, to approve the agreement between Jennifer Reynolds and the Town of Southbridge for aerobic classes for citizens age 60 at the community center. All in favor. I don't have -- okay, there it is. That's about it. All in favor. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Moriarty, seconded by Counselor Pellican. Vote by show of hands, all in favor. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda D is Planning and Development. That would be Counselor Clements.
Thank you. We have not had a meeting yet, and there's nothing scheduled at this moment, but again, just echoing your words, if anyone is interested in being on the Planning and Development Subcommittee, we ask that you get that letter of interest over to the Town Manager's office, and we'll schedule a meeting to get you on board.
Thank you, Counselor. E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Langvin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A meeting of the Protection of Person and Property Subcommittee meeting was held on Tuesday, July 24th, 2012, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were Chairman Langvin, Counselor Regis, Counselor Pellican, also in attendance was Counselor Markucci, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Pellican, Town Manager Clark, Police Chief Charette, Lieutenant Woodson, Dick Chesler, Attorney John Carey. Counselor McDonald was excused. Chairman Langvin called the meeting to order at 7:30. Agenda item number one, vote to enter an executive session according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 23B, discuss strategies related to conducted collective bargaining and litigation, and vote to adjourn. A motion was made by Counselor Pellican, seconded by Counselor Regis, to enter an executive session at 7:30. Vote by roll call, all in favor, six to zero. Enter back into open session at 10:25 PM. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Regis, seconded by Counselor Pellican. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 10:25. Respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. I do have no meeting scheduled at this time, and yes, we are looking for citizen members to participate, so anyone interested, please submit your letter of intention to the Town Manager's office, and that's all I have at this point. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Okay. Moving along to Agenda Item Number Six, Chairwoman's Announcements. The only announce -- well, I have two. One, after our last meeting, there was a citizen who approached Citizens Forum and suggested that we consider naming one of the rooms in the Town Hall after the late George Parent, and I just wanted to let you know that we are in the process of doing that. There is a plaque that's being made up, a portrait, and it will be -- and a portrait, and it will be Meeting Room Two downstairs, the former Retirement Board room will become the George Parent room. And as soon as that all happens, we will announce that. Secondly, I wanted to throw this out to the council members. I have, for a long time, wanted the council to go on a ride-along with DPW and see the various facilities in Southbridge. We vote on a lot of things up here. It's important that we know what we're -- it's nice to be able to see what you're voting on. So we're going to set something up so that all of the counselors can be taken on a tour. I know some of you know quite a bit of what's going on in town, but there are new things that maybe not everybody is aware of, so we will be doing that. I'm also interested in a tour of the middle high school for all of the members of the council, to have an opportunity to see it. I was up there again this past Thursday where the manager was conducting a tour for some of the members of the Town Hall, and every time I see it, it's closer and closer to being completed. It's absolutely fantastic. Of course, I don't know what I got on the bottom of my car when I went on the field, but who do I sue? I just need to know. Who do I sue?
No one.
No? All right. Because I can't get it off, whatever it is. But that. And so that we're going to do that also, have a tour of the middle high -- and middle high school facility, a ride around with the DPW, and I also want to have another meeting like we did last year where the council can sit and discuss goals and objectives for this year. And again, I'm looking for dates, so if you guys could kind of look at your calendars, see what's open for the next, you know, month or two on a Saturday. I don't want to do it all at once. That's an awful lot to put on anybody, so we kind of break it up into three different times. And with that, I'm going to move on to Town Manager's announce -- oh, one last thing. I would be remiss. Last week, I had an opportunity to go up to the community center and take a look at the brand-new windows that are in that facility. This is a project that was undertaken by one of our counselors, who went out and did what she needed to do. I commend Counselor Clements for an absolutely wonderful job. I know she didn't -- she didn't do all of the physical work herself, but she certainly put this thing together and coordinated it and got the money and the funding from a lot of generous people in our community who worked very well with the town. And I just wanted to thank you and commend you on your hard work. It's beautiful. It's great, and it's going to be wonderful for everybody, especially this year. When it gets cold, it won't be cold in the community center because we have nice new windows, and it looks great. So with that, I'd like to move on to Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have several this evening, and what I'll do is just kind of work my way through. On -- we did an RFP for AD Marcy Street, the former, now former, middle school here in the community. There were no takers on that, which probably isn't too much of a surprise to folks, but we will continue to endeavor to market that building to the best of our ability. On the next one, I have -- we received a donation from Tractor Supply, the assistant manager, a gentleman by the name of Tim Langvin, for a recent donation to the Town of Southbridge Department of Public Works, grateful for six large boxes of various spray and brush on paints. We have used many of them for specific paints and primers in the donation, so the DPW will be able to reutilize some of this paint that was donated to it for various projects in the community. Next one, on the RFP related to Commercial Drive, we had advertised 10 acres of property. We did receive a bid on four acres, and that is currently being processed, and at this point, it looks favorable. The next item I have is that we did receive -- administration received and the council received a letter from -- of concern from the police union. I just wish to say that I do acknowledge receipt of the letter. The letter was made public by the police union, so we did -- administration and the police chief did publicly respond to those points that were highlighted in the letter. I have also gone and personally toured the facility, looked at the various items, and I'm convinced that the matter is something that's more related to questions in the collective bargaining process, which has not gone altogether that smoothly. I have the utmost confidence in the chief. We have already had an additional negotiation session with the union that I thought was productive, and that we will continue the process. From my perspective, I think that this is an issue that doesn't need any additional attention. It's been adequately addressed, and I believe that to conclude, addressing that issue should be best handled in the collective bargaining process. And then the last item that I have, Madam Chair, is also an item note related to the police department. There we are, holding the police sergeant's exam and the chief. We are doing this with an outside consultant that the town had voted previously, Public Safety Consultants LLC of Shrewsbury, and the examinations will be held on August 7th and 8th. And if members of the council wish to strictly observe, because I may go and observe myself, portions of that assessment center, you're more than welcome to do that. Specific dates -- specific times on those dates will be determined, and we will make that information available as it becomes available to the office. That concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Okay. Moving right along to Agenda Number Eight, which is set aside for swearing-in and presentations. This evening, we have two. The first on the agenda, Fastenal is a new business, and that one has been postponed at this time. The second one would be Central Los Americas, which is the Latino Elder Program, and we're going to get an update, I believe, by Ms. Roxana Gomez. Mr. Gomez.
Good evening. Mr. Clark, good evening, everybody. I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for the support the Latino Elder Program received from the town and to ask you help to keep running the program. I know it's not part of the town, but any company, any organization can help us to keep running the program. I have 40 members, 35 active right now, and it's like giving them a candy and now taking the candy away. I want these people to continue feeling part of the community. They are wonderful. They are learning different things. They are socializing and meet new people. I have maybe most of the group here. They decide to come and support me and support the program, support Central Los Americas. I appreciate if they -- anybody, the town, can help us and to give ideas or to give any -- any donation or any funds to keep running the program. I have one lady that she wants to say something very briefly. I am the server, and she's the one who's being served, so she can say how she feels about the program. Andrea?
Please go.
If you could use the microphone, please.
She's the queen of the program.
My name is Andrea Ortiz. I'm one of the members of the program, and I have to say myself, I think we was waiting for this kind of opportunity for many, many years, to have something that we can depend and we can have some. I call good time because we have a beautiful person as a coordinator, and I think she's the type of a person that she had that grace to work with the elderly people, and we are very proud of her. And we are hoping that we can keep her for a long time, not to say goodbye in October. And I have to say that I have lived in Southbridge for many years, and I know most of the people that they are going to the center now. And believe me, I'm surprised myself because I know some people that they never go out except a doctor appointment or a church. And when I see them, very happy they are in the center and enjoy the program. They laugh, they dance, they talk, and I'm the one that I'm happy for them because I think now they feel like home with somebody who we share. And sometimes 12 o'clock, and we don't want to go home because all the faces look happy and enjoy, and especially, she take care of us very well. And that's why I'm hoping that some -- for someplace, somewhere, and I know she's working hard and putting application and call people to get the grants, you know, the money to pay. And I'm hoping that somebody hear her voice and say, "Here I am," or somebody get in touch with the person who came, donate the money to keep the program going. And like I say, well, if I'm going to talk, I have a lot of things to say, but I'm happy and they are happy and she's happy, and we are more happy if we hear that somebody had the donation for our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm getting old. So, once again, thank you very much, Mr. Manager, for the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the council. We are here specifically to appeal to you to give us the opportunity to solicit, once again, the block grant funding for this program. When we submitted the proposal initially to the Town of Southbridge, we proposed that we would serve a total of 50 -- reach 50 seniors in a 12- to 16-month period and have 35 active members of the program participating in this program. This program began, as you know, on January 5th of this calendar year, and already we have met the objectives that we were supposed -- that we reached, that we proposed in the -- as we first started the program. We have 35 active members year-to-date, and we will have a lot more if you give us the opportunity to continue this program. Let me just tell you a little bit about what we're doing on the part of the organization to leverage the funds that the Town of Southbridge has given to us. Since this program began and since we submitted the proposal to the Town of Southbridge, Central Los Americas has submitted a proposal to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and has begun a program called Adult Foster Care Program. This is going to not only provide additional services to the seniors that we serve through this program, but to other seniors throughout the region. It's important also for you to know that we have submitted a proposal to the Health Foundation of Central Massachusetts, where we are actually going to look specifically at the seniors that are participating in our program, both in the Worcester Program as well as in the Southbridge Program, and specifically those seniors who have identified mental health, and in particular, depression, as one of the issues that they're dealing with. Through this grant, which we believe we will be successful in securing, we will be able to identify 40 individuals that have expressed that depression has been a problem in their life, and be able to provide intervention to 20 of those seniors in sort of a project. But in addition to that, at the end of that program, we're going to secure the mechanism by which we will continue to be able to provide that intervention to seniors that are identified with depression. In addition, we have a new proposal that we're working on that we'll submitting to the state, to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to provide personal care services to seniors that are either stuck at home or have some limited needs and are able to participate in our program but cannot do it on a regular basis and need assistance at home. And while there may be other organizations that are providing similar services, I will tell you that -- no criticism to anyone, but we are able to reach this population better than anyone else. We know how to reach them. We know how to get them to interact. We know how to provide the services they need. And so we are working with the systems that are already in place to leverage the resources that the town has invested in this program to better serve the population and to better -- and to hopefully continue major provider in the area, to possibly team up and submit a proposal to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for an adult day health program that would serve this population. These things would not have been possible but for your investment. Because you invested in this program, we realized there was a significant need in the Town of Southbridge, particularly serving this population. We are committing ourselves to continue to bring additional resources to this program, whether it is through an adult foster care program or PCA program that we will implement, or working in partnership with other resources in town to make sure that we continue to meet the needs of these programs. And we're asking you, the town, to please give us the opportunity to resubmit the proposal for the block grant funding for this program. We recognize that there are a lot of community organizations in town. We recognize that everyone has a need, but as you can see, this is a doubly vulnerable population. The Latino community in Southbridge is growing exponentially. I don't even know what the final figures are from the last census, but before the census, it was over twenty-five percent. And so, it's big. In addition to that, we have already identified that seniors, and Latino seniors in particular, are very vulnerable to depression. This program, the Latino Elder Program in Southbridge, is bringing those seniors out, is getting them to interact, is getting them to meet their neighbors, to socialize. And I do understand that a number of you have taken the opportunity to visit the program, and you see what is happening. Beyond serving this particular population, these seniors are now interacting with seniors from the Southbridge Community Center, something that has been tried for a very long time with little or no success. So, we are here to ask you to give us the opportunity to submit a proposal again, because we know that it's money well-spent, and we're leveraging it and bringing a lot more resources to town to serve this vulnerable population. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'd love to answer any questions if you have.
Council Moriarty, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, it's, one question I more or less had, and I suppose at the moment, it's changed based on the presentation, so through you to the manager, if possible. Is that something that we, is that a request that is feasible in terms of legalities and such, in terms of allowing them to pursue again through the town and CD, GB, and everything else?
Just in terms of the details, the funding for this came from the Community Development Block Grant. The Community Development Block Grant is a federal program that has fairly strict guidelines that the town tries to comply with. And I think two years ago is the first time that we opened it up to social programs. It had never been previously opened up to social programs. But the Community Development Director presented to the town, to the town council, a desire to open it up to social programs, and the council, I believe, gave its support to that endeavor with the idea that it would be kind of startup money to kind of let someone get going, but not to be a sustaining money. And I don't honestly recall off the top of my head whether that was a Community Development Block Grant requirement for the one year and then to move people on, or whether that was something that the council had put in. I don't know if any of the members have specific recollection, but I think that if a request was to be made, certainly that could be something that would be vetted to see if it is, in fact, possible in accordance with federal guidelines. So, obviously, we have two thresholds to meet. One is the federal threshold, and certainly, they give us the money, so we have to follow their rules. But then, the second is, if it is up to town discretion, I know that myself and staff pay a lot of due deference to the wishes of the council when it comes to policy directions of the community. So, if the council wanted to continue a social program, that would be something certainly that we would entertain seriously.
I think, you know, in the past, you know, various grants and such have been very beneficial. There are some that have not, you know, have more or less sputtered. I think from what we've seen and from what I've heard, not just tonight, but other nights as well, this is clearly one that's working. So, I would think that it would behoove us to support them in any way we possibly can. And then, the only other question I had was more so for the folks in charge here. What does it, what kind of funds does it typically cost to run the program for the year?
Well, when we submitted the proposal to the town, we submitted a proposal that added transportation and had some other costs associated. When we received the grant, we received a grant for fifty thousand dollars for the year, and we've been able to work with that. It costs more than that because we cover some of the costs associated with the administration of the program from the perspective of oversight as well as additional support. We commit ourselves that if you give us one more year, we will work hard to make sure that we are able to fully fund this program through the partnerships that we'll continue to develop, as well as through the programs and contract proposals that we're submitting to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which means that if we understand that we'll have one more year, we will work that much harder to make sure that we can, that we can make sure that this program is sustainable beyond that. The challenge that we face is that, you know, we sort of started this program, we recognize the importance of making sure that this is not something that the town will have to bear for other years and give opportunity to other programs to get started. But we commit to you, Central Las Americas is an organization that is growing significantly. Last week, we had, a week ago Friday, we had our staff outing. And at the staff outing, I presented to our employees the statistics in terms of the old programs and the new programs, the old budget, the 2012 budget, and the 2013 budget. And this year, because of the things that are happening at Central Las Americas, we've grown forty-two percent. That means these new programs that we're putting in place. And these are things that are going to be able to sustain a program like this, which is a mission program that has such a hard time getting funding from other sources. So, we're here to do whatever you need us to, and we're asking for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just my recollection of having been involved with the processes, and my recommendation would be, obviously, that first, we need to go to economic development. We need to verify things with Ms. Ackley, because that would be the step to do this. Sitting up here and wishing, you know, that we drop a present doesn't work. We need to actually make sure we cross the Ts, dot the Is. But my recollection was, you know, one time, and that if the program had a significant change or development, then potentially could be considered. It's also my understanding that this year's funds are gone. That was, what was voted on last fall is given up for this year, you know, those programs that were donated that money or awarded that money. That's done for this year, then the next set, if the council so chooses to give more social service monies to, will come up again when, as the CDPG grant money flows again. So, there would be no money, my understanding, there would be no additional funds before 2013 anyway.
Right. We recognize that.
Okay.
Yeah. We recognize that, that this is through December of 2012.
Right. And even then, the process is quite lengthy. But I think first step first is really to get to Ms. Ackley and get the, what it is and where it all came from in terms of criteria and what we agreed on, because this isn't even something that we have to continue. Those funds can either go for town projects, or this being considered a town project, a social service town project. So, we have that flexibility a bit to keep all the funding for specific, say, structural improvements, that types of things. Or, in our case, we thought it was very important, once the state allowed us to, or the feds allowed us to give money to social service programs, we saw the value in that, and as a council, we made sure we helped with some of those programs. That's just my input for tonight. So, we hear you. I think everybody feels what you're feeling, and I think our next step is to move it and then bring it into subcommittee. I believe it comes under EHS.
Yep. It's EHS.
No, it's EHS. Yep. That would just be my suggestion, is we move forward.
Okay. So, if we could be informed as to the subcommittee meeting, when it comes back, we'll be present and we'll make a presentation. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. You're doing great work, though. I love what I see there.
Thank you. Thank you. Move on to, we have a presentation by Will Canoia.
Yeah. Just, we had received a request at, I believe, the last council meeting with the, one of the new members of the council wanted to have a overview of different departments. So, I endeavored to accomplish that, and what we'll do over the next probably several meetings, have individual members of the various town staff come out, different department heads introduce themselves, talk a little bit about what their operation is, how we interact with the public, and then, if there's a few questions, I did tell staff to try to keep it five or ten minutes so we'd have a chance to actually get meetings continuing on. So, Will Canoia is our first up from the assessors' office.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Will Canoia. I'm the principal assessor and IT manager. I want to thank you for this opportunity to tell you what we and the Board of Assessors do. I also want to thank you for the opportunity of letting me go first, so I'll give it my take. I'm sure it's going to be refined by other department heads. And the five minutes or ten minutes, I'll do my very best. Okay. So, I am Will Canoia. I'm the principal assessor, IT manager. I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I was originally an elected member of the Board of Assessors from 1989 to 2001. At that time, I became the appointed principal assessor, handling the function full-time. In 2006, the IT manager responsibility, handling IT functions for the town hall was added. I'm a Massachusetts accredited assessor, as certified by the, it's a tough one, Massachusetts Association of Assessing Officers. I'm past president of the Worcester County Assessing Association, and I currently serve on the executive board of that association. The other two members of the Board of Assessors are Fran Biscay. He was elected in the early 1990s, approximately 1992, so he's got about twenty years' experience. The other elected member is Cara Donovan. She was elected in 2006, and she serves to the current time. She was also the principal assessor from 97 to 2001, so she has about ten years. So, between those two and myself with twenty-three years, we have about fifty-three years of assessing experience in Southbridge. Okay. Assessors, what do we do? One of our primary tasks is to value and appraise all of the property, which is approximately six thousand parcels in the Town of Southbridge annually, and we do that based on the prior year sales. Everything we do is, virtually everything we do, is statutorily or regulatory required. We don't have the option to not do it, to skip it, to cut corners. It's required. And how do we do that? Well, basically, we have a model of every property in town in our CAMA system, CAMA standing for Computer Aided Mass Appraisal System. So, basically, we have a model or a profile of every property based on the land, based on the size, the shape, the age, the quality, the components, the condition, the neighborhood it's in, and many other factors. And so, every property has a component, a model, which we value based on current market conditions, and we do that based on the sales that occurred in our community. So, what do we do? We inspect all of the sales in our property annually, because they are the comps for setting the values. We inspect and update all the properties that have applied for building permit. So, virtually, everybody who takes out a building permit, we go to that house to look and to see what that did to that house, how it changed it. We have an ongoing mandatory inspection program of all properties in town. We re-inspect every property at least once every nine years. All of the above functions, we do in-house with our existing, with our current staff. We send out and review income and expense questionnaires, which we mail to all commercial, industrial, and apartment building owners. This information is critical in determining the income generated and thus the value of those types of properties. We mail out forms of list, which is a personal property return required of all businesses. This allows us to value all the business equipment fairly and accurately, which is called, business equipment being personal property. We, or our contractor, also visits every one of these accounts on the personal property side every three years and physically inventories all of the equipment. As you know, the town council voted about 2005 to exempt personal property accounts with less than a thousand dollars in value, but even though they are not taxed, they still need to be valued to determine that they're less than a thousand dollars. By the way, less than a thousand dollars, if an account was valued at a thousand dollars last year, that annual tax would be seventeen eighty-three, which is the cost to collect that exceed the cost to, the revenue that it brings in just about. Okay? In addition to the above, which we do every year, we go through revaluation and recertification with the Department of Revenue every three years. This is the same process, but much more detailed, and it requires specialized expertise in many areas of appraisal practice. That's why we need a contractor to assist us. Currently, we have Vision Government Solutions assisting us in the real property revaluation, and Real Estate Research Consultants, RRC, assisting us with personal property. We and our vendor, during the revaluation program every three years, we and our vendor conduct a full field review. This means we do an exterior inspection of all properties in town. At this time, we review, again, review, condition, grade, other conditions that affect its value to be sure we get it right, and it's fair and consistent with other properties. The Department of Revenue, then, will review, verify everything by analyzing all the statistical data, and also by inspecting sample properties and conducting a data quality study of all of our properties. After detailed analysis, and this is the step we're in right now with the Department of Revenue, after detailed analysis and meeting all certification standards, hopefully, the town gets certification approval timely. Some towns, it takes, not timely, it happens months after the deadlines, and tax bills get delayed and so forth. That's never happened in all of our time here. Okay. Following all of the above, we then submit our new growth to the Department of Revenue for approval, and we talk about that at classification time. That new growth is an increase in the tax levy that doesn't affect existing taxpayers. Okay? This valuation process is critical as it ensures that everybody pays only their proportional share of the tax levy based on their proportional ownership of the town. Okay? Let me give a quick example of what that means, because people ask me about their value and the taxes and all of that. It's really, it's a reasonably simple concept. If there was a very small town with ten houses valued at a hundred thousand dollars apiece, totals a million dollars, they would each pay, ten thousand, a hundred thousand divided by a million, ten percent of the tax levy. But if for some reason, we valued Council Lantvin's house at a hundred and fifty thousand, and he would be paying fifteen percent of the tax levy of the town. So, the point is, it's critical that he be valued correctly. If his house is only worth a hundred thousand, and these are all hypothetical numbers, of course, but if it's only a hundred thousand, he should be only paying ten percent of the total tax levy because he owns ten percent of the town. Okay? So, what else does the board do? The Board of Assessors completes the recap at tax rate setting time and calculates the tax rate each year. We do this in conjunction with all the other departments, the finance director, the town manager, and the town council. You recall the classification hearing, the votes we have. But it is the Board of Assessors' responsibility to sign and submit to the Department of Revenue for review and approval for the tax rate. After all of the above process, we create about six thousand tax bills, and the tax collector's office mails them. I call them Christmas cards because we mail them right at Christmas, right after Christmas. We then handle and process all of the exemption applications from seniors, disabled veterans, and others who qualify under the law, under the laws detailing their exemptions, as well as the senior tax rebate program. After the bills are mailed, we also get abatement applications for people who feel that their properties are overvalued. We inspect these properties and review and adjust the values if appropriate. Motor vehicle excise tax is another big responsibility of ours and a big revenue producer for the town. We prepare and process approximately fifteen thousand excise tax bills a year, which bring in about a million-two in revenue, per year in revenue. We then get and process about seven hundred abatement applications from people who sell, trade in, or otherwise dispose of those vehicles during the year. We provide ongoing information to realtors, other professionals, other town departments, and particularly to taxpayers in regards to the real estate and related issues in town. We monitor the activity, and we usually receive over a hundred in-office visitors or telephone calls per week. We are online daily with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds, tracking sales, tracking sales and ownership changes on properties. Typically, if a deed is recorded at four o'clock in Worcester at the Registry of Deeds, our staff will have our database updated by ten o'clock the next morning. We manage the Mass General Law Chapter 61 programs that discount the value and taxation for agricultural, horticultural land and forestry. will have our database updated by 10:00 the next morning. We manage the Master in Law Chapter 61 programs that discount the value and taxation for agricultural, horticultural land and forestry under the program. This helps promote farming and helps maintain open space on large tracts of land. We manage and prepare all of the GIS map updates for our parcels, along with our vendor, Applied Geographics. The maps are all online and can be accessed through the town website, along with our assessors' online database. People all the time, this is one that I'd like to tout a little bit, if you go to our town website, Google Town of Southbridge, right on the front page, it should say GIS Online Data, and you can pop up a map of any property in town, any street in town, any neighborhood in town. You can look at the prop, you can look, through that, you can look at a property value of any property, you can look at the ownership, and there's a link to our assessors' online database, which will give you all the information we have about all of the properties in town. This is just a summary of our major taxation functions, but there's a huge amount of administration support functions that go along with this and support these functions. Okay? In addition, we also handle water sewer billing. When the town decided to purchase the Southbridge Water Supply Company in 1990, the water supply company, Southbridge Water Supply Company did their own billing. They were a private company. Well, when we bought them, we wanted to take that billing in-house. So with, when that happened, we had to find a place where we were going to do that. Well, that came to the assessors. And that all of the water and sewer billing functions were added to the responsibility of the assessors' office at that time, with the same amount of staff as we have now, but neither here nor there. This function entails preparing and billing over 4,000 accounts per quarter, or 16,000 per year. There are also weekly final bills, service billings, and other routine daily tasks. After these bills are mailed, we then process any abatement applications that may be submitted. Until about a year ago, every one of the meter readings from these water and sewer billings had to be entered manually from a meter reading card into the billing software. With the new radio read meter program, which we are now about 90% of the way to being completely automated, however, even with the automated system, there is still a great deal of time spent with the outliers, errors, exceptions, and other issues that require additional attention. But that's a huge step in minimizing the repetitive 1980 data entry stuff. Okay, as I said earlier, beginning in 2006, I became responsible for managing the IT functions for all town hall departments. This entails maintaining the servers, PCs, software, and other peripherals. I do this personally, and also assisted by a vendor, Global Data Systems, who has the certified specialist available for everything I don't know, which is a lot. That's a brief summary of what we did. It's under five minutes. Under 10 minutes. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Will. Okay. Moving along to agenda item number nine, citizens forum. Do I have any citizens in the audience who wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
James Sotilly, 83, Pinedale Street. Counselors, it was apparent over the last few several election cycles that a large segment of Southbridge voters have suffered from a perception of the legislative branch of town government, when seated each July, was less prepared to handle our affairs in a cognizant and professional manner. After prolific discussions with many like-minded individuals, it became abundantly clear that a political logjam was being permanently created as a consequence of half-truths and half-hearted, inspired demagoguery from both the left and the right. Because of this, it appeared to many that our political subdivision was not moving forward for the betterment of the community. A concerned group of citizens began to search for a common thread that was the fundamental issue apparently holding Southbridge hostage to what many consider larger interest than for the common good of the people. This was reflected in attempts to change the form of government or to filibuster issues to a point where the authors on each side did not recognize their original points. With that thought in mind, we believe it would be more appropriate to create a device that would allow our elected representatives to be more painstakingly deliberative in their decision processes. Suggestions were many. On the other hand, they included too many documents that each council could use effectively. Discussion settled on producing a handbook for counselor-ready reference and use during their deliberative duties. It is with our compliments that we present this contribution of time and fortune to assist each of you during the coming year. That handbook contains the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, and the Code of Bylaws for the Town of Southbridge. We made it available to have it ready, you folks could have it ready at your service while you're working, rather than have to delay issues and return later with a decision. In addition, I've, I'll distribute suggested agenda items for consideration by the Southbridge Town Council during the 2012-2013 legislative year. Number one, consider installing an open public, non-encrypted Wi-Fi system, layering the entire downtown area. Connective ability will draw electronically-ready citizens to use the downtown area more and develop into a magnet for enhanced business and interchange possibilities by interested Equip the town council with computers, tablets, and other electronic state-of-art capabilities to provide more efficient progression of legislation. Remove payment requirements for copies of the town budget proposals. Publish at no cost to the public copies of the town manager's quarterly reports. Name and identify a town council endorsed and appointed discussion group of selected citizens who will provide a public report to the town council on the virtues of a town council versus a town meeting form of government. Recognize and reinstate from archival materials all Civil War, Grand Army of the Republic, Spanish and American War, World War I, World War II memorabilia, for use in a town-sponsored museum depicting the military contributions of the Town of Southbridge. Consider forming a town council endorsed and appointed committee to assist the merging of other nonofficial historical archives into a single, quote, "center of history", unquote, museum located in the downtown area to encourage enhanced tourist interest in Southbridge, Massachusetts. These are provided for you folks to assist you in your deliberations, and I thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Sotilly. Do we have any other citizens who wish to come forward? Okay, I'm moving right along. Agenda item number 10, a vote to accept the warrants for the state primary scheduled for Thursday, September 6, 2012. Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Peliquin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Lanzivan?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item 11, vote to ratify change order number eight between the Town of Southbridge and Consigley Construction for a no-cost change order. I'm going to take a short recess. Five minutes.[1179.13]
I have water, please. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, vote to ratify change order number eight between the town of Southbridge and Consigly Construction for a no-cost change order for the rendering of an extension of substantial completion for the middle high school.
So moved.
Any discussion? Okay, we have a roll call, please.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Peliquin?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Langivan?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number 12, vote to ratify change order number nine between the town of Southbridge and Consigly Construction in the amount of $19,291, as described in the memo attached and dated July 16, 2012.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Peliquin?
Yes.
Council Regis?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Clemmons?
Yes.
Council Langivan?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council McDonald?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda number 13, vote to authorize the school business manager to enter into contracts for the purchase of equipment related to the media center, which is the library, and the media classroom, which is a small studio in the middle high school. For the middle high school in the amount of $120,000, with said funding to come from two sources, one, school technology budget up to $60,000, and two, cable committee capital fund in the amount of $60,000. Said amount to also be approved by the cable committee.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I do have the school business manager that would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I just think under two, I think there's an up to...
In the amount?
Up to.
Of the second $60,000.
Okay, in the amount of up to $60,000. This is for the cable committee capital fund? Is that right, Mr. Wiggins? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, so, comment on this. Could I ask for this item to be tabled? We did not get the equipment list from Mr. Wiggins yet on exactly what was going to be purchased, and just to be frank, on a personal note, I've had comments and emails sent to me stating that $60,000 would be in excess, too much money to be taking out of the capital fund. Also considering looking back, maybe about four or five years ago, if I'm not mistaken, this school already received some funding for some additional equipment, which they currently have, that is, if I'm not mistaken, not being used in the new facility. It's kind of almost like stuff was purchased, and now it's just kind of being tossed aside. So, at least for now, until we can go over the equipment list and see exactly what is being ordered, I would ask if this item could be tabled until we receive the list from Mr. Wiggins.
Madam Chair?
Okay, Mr. Clark?
I just, and actually, I had not had a chance to talk with the committee chair. Part of the reason why we put in this motion that said amount to be approved by the cable committee was for the purposes of having that discussion occur and to see what amount, and I do appreciate the correction of up to $60,000. Just in terms of timing, the school will be turned over to us any day, and we have, I think, the first day of school is September 4. We obviously can't wait till the last minute to put any equipment in. So what I would ask the council is that we voted with the acknowledgement, which is already in here, is that it does have to be vetted and approved by the cable committee. So the $60,000, the up to $60,000, would not become operable until the cable committee formally votes that. And that's what this motion has, because I knew that conversation hadn't occurred, and I wanted to have that opportunity for it to occur. So, yeah, and I think the school's saying that they're amenable to that. So I would like to go ahead, just because it takes a while to order this stuff, to put it in, and then have it operational. And I know 30 days sounds like a long time, but it's really not for ordering equipment. So we will have that meeting and move prodigiously to get it accomplished as quickly as we can.
I do have one question, perhaps, if I could ask Mr. Wiggins, he might be able to answer it for me. Is there a class and syllabus set up for this particular equipment?
To the podium. We are in the process of going through and setting up classes and syllabus right now, because this program, as far as the media classroom, is going to be expanded into some broadcast journalism and some other options that currently we haven't been able to do. There's also the, because of the new technology, there's things that we're going to be able to integrate, such as incorporating the students, for example, to be able to do sort of a morning broadcast where they're providing the news. The fact that the media classroom is also the studio from which you'll be able to broadcast items from cafeteria, from the media center, and of course, from the auditorium and the gymnasium. So there's a number of things that are new here as part of this program that, and that's part of why we're developing this list, we absolutely want the input of the cable committee. The other thing is, any items purchased with cable money remain cable equipment, okay? They remain, they're on loan to us, for use in the school, but they remain cable equipment. And I'm hearing that there's equipment that we have that we're putting aside. If there's equipment that we have that we can reuse in a new school, we're happy to use, to look at that and use that to reduce the cost of what we would need here. My understanding, however, is what we have right now is analog equipment, and this is all a digital system. So that's my understanding of why there's not a whole lot of what had been purchased in the past that we can reuse.
Council McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of concerns that have already, some have already been addressed, that we had purchased this equipment that remained unused at the current high school. Second thing is, I don't like how this is being split up. It's double dipping, it's two bites at the apple. We're taking $60,000 from taxpayers in one form, and then $60,000 from ratepayers, who are also taxpayers, just like what we did with some other previous equipment, and I'm opposed to that type of monetary shell game, for lack of a better term, is how I look at it. The other thing is, is that we are supposed to be a body that approves these fiscal things when they're brought to us, completed, not saying, well, we're going to go ahead and give tacit approval, and then let a lower body, which is advisory, say, well, let them vote on it. Well, we know what the vote's going to be, because we've already told them what to vote. And it shouldn't be that way. We keep violating process and procedure. These things should all have been inventoried in preparation for moving to the new school, and we should know exactly what is usable and can go over there, so we know what kind of money we're going to be spending. This is capital equipment, moving it from, or capital budget-type stuff, we're going to be buying capital equipment with it. It's a large sum of money, I understand the short timeframe, but lack of preparation doesn't, on, you know, somebody else's part, does not constitute an emergency on our part. I make a motion that we table this until such time as we can get further information and get a complete listing of information as what could be used and a more accurate pricing of what's going to be needed.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Before I entertain a vote, is there any further discussion? Hold on, please. Mr. Clark, go ahead.
Just to provide some clarity, this isn't the traditional capital budget that we have as part of the town's overall operating budget. There was a negotiated agreement with Charter to provide operating dollars on an annual basis. There was also an agreement to provide capital funds from Charter to make sure that we had the ability to do some work in the high school building, that I believe the appropriation on that, not the appropriation, the money the town received and has already received, it's already in the bank from Charter, is $100,000. The committee had previously voted their capital budget that was presented to Charter, that was presented to this town council, that was voted by this town council, that out of that $100,000 in capital, there was a list of inventory that was anticipated to be in the media classroom that is now being presented. So this isn't something that has come to surface at the last minute. This is something that is an intent that was made probably back almost two years ago at this point. Specifically what's being done now is specifically the details of what goes in, what MSBA purchased for that classroom versus what the cable committee would like to have in that classroom in order to be able to broadcast live out to the community, is the equipment that we're talking about that's needed for use in that studio. So to characterize this as an 11th-hour thing or something that is, you know, I think, just think that's an unfair characterization to characterize it that way. But I appreciate that not all details are always laid out to folks, and I think it's always incumbent upon me to try to lay out what the process was to bring us to this date. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hi, my name is Paul Zotos, and I ran the cable office for 10, 12 years. And I worked on this school project, and another gentleman, his name is Ted Dubsky, he was let go last year. He was a technology expert that helped me build the studio at Zeta Town Hall. He was a technology expert that built the studio that's now at the old high school. And we built it in such a way that it was made to be moved up to the new high school, and nobody made a decision whether that equipment was going to go to Wells or Southbridge High or be used in some media center in the middle. Back then, we didn't know, but we made sure that the equipment was digital, not analog, and the cameras are digital, not analog. And the only thing we can't move from the auditorium is the wiring, because we wired everything right into the building, so no wires would be on the ground. So the whole studio can be moved with it to Wells or to Southbridge High. The cameras can be used anywhere, they always are, they always have been. This is the 11th hour, and it's all being done backwards. What I said the last time I addressed the town at the subcommittee meeting is, there is no such thing as government-controlled public television. There is no such thing. This is why. When I was there, they took $160,000 in 2005, 2008, they took $30,000 a year for the last five years. They've spent way too much money this year on personnel, and probably me and a lot of other things, and so 30 days isn't enough time to do anything. Mr. Elley promised me a teacher. We formed a club at Southbridge High, not a classroom, because there is no teacher at Southbridge High. We formed a video club, and I was promised a teacher. By the time we got to the new school, we were going to have a real teacher who went to school and learned to be a video educator. There's a group called Video Educators of New England, works out of Wantyuset Community College. Our teacher should be a member of that group, if he's teaching video in New England. Then he's in a network. Then he would have a, there would be a curriculum, and he would be a teacher, and when he'd work with all the other teachers, and then when our kids graduate and they go to the community colleges and the colleges, they'll be up to, they'll be up to speed, because what they're teaching now is not even standard television production at the high school. It's a mishmash of everybody's idea what television is. But we were promised a real teacher. And how you can spend this money now, before you have the class, before you have the teacher, and you're competing with high schools that have these things already in place, Tantascqua has had a teacher for 10 years at Tantascqua, graduated from video school, went to college. Tantascqua has that. Bay Path doesn't have any video teachers. They're behind the ball. We were almost there, and then now we've dropped the ball. We've got 30 days to hire a teacher, figure out a curriculum, get a class going, and make sure this all works. But we lost Paul Zotos, and we lost Ted Dubsky, and everybody's scrambling now. And when Mr. Clark did the contract, I wanted capital money. You do a 10-year contract, but you're operating a studio that I built in 2002. So a new studio should have been at the town hall. A new studio should be built at the high school, and a new studio should be built downtown for the public. There's three. So how the school now gets half the money, I don't know. If anything, maybe they should get a third of the money, but they've probably already gotten their third. So it's government, the town hall TV, the school TV, and where's the public station? The public has been waiting patiently for their own little place that they can work downtown. Can't go in the town hall. If you do it at the high school, we'll have to wait till Wells is done using it, Southbridge High is done using it. Maybe we can use it on the weekends, maybe we can use it after school. We won't know. And that's not the way the public studio was supposed to run. We used the town hall as a public studio for many years, and I think it worked pretty good. We used to work on Sundays, work on Saturdays.
Mr. Zotos, is this, are you also?
Can I get five more minutes?
If it's not, if it's got anything to do with what we have here on the vote, because I didn't see you at the subcommittee meeting, I didn't see a lot of the speakers at the subcommittee meeting, at EHS subcommittee meeting where we discussed this, that would have been a good idea for you to attend that meeting at that point.
If I would have been told about it, I would have been there.
Oh, it was posted.
The committee wasn't told about it.
It was posted.
I'm not done. Tommy How, I talked to Tommy How today, he's the vice chairman.
Can you please hold on?
I make a motion that we give Mr. Zotos another additional time.
We'll give him three more minutes if the council so chooses. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on this? Show of hands, all in favor? Okay, three more minutes.
I talked to Tommy How today. Tommy How was the vice chairman of the cable committee, probably the longest sitting member that's still there. Bob Dupree resigned because of this was going on. Bob Dupree, who worked for 40 years for us, teaching at the school and teaching video, he quit because he knew this wasn't right. Tommy How is in Hawaii right now. The vice chairman had no idea what you people were doing. Never mind that I didn't go to the EHS committee. Tommy How wasn't even told you were taking $60,000 tonight. He's in Hawaii. I told him at 4 o'clock, and he said a word that I can't repeat on television. So whether I was there, the vice chairman wasn't there. The chairman's not happy with the deal. Paul Zotos didn't even want to be here tonight, but I came, and after listening to what I heard, had to get up, Kathy, this just isn't right.
It's council to you.
Counsel, I'm sorry. It just isn't right. And so I think we should all take a deep breath, let's have a meeting, next cable meeting, I'd like to be there, you should be there, we should all be there, we should get Ted Dubsky, we should find out what we're doing, because it's up to our kids. We want kids to go to this school. I've been teaching kids how to do video in Southbridge for 12 years, and I want this school to teach. I don't want to play a game. We gave out grades for three years, and we had no teacher. We gave out awards at graduation, and we have no teacher. Grades and awards with no teacher? Nobody's certified? It's ridiculous. So everybody take a deep breath. Sorry I talk too much, but I've held it in for quite a while. Let's do this right, let's all get together, let's sit down, let's talk about it. There's plenty of time, if we do it right. If we do it wrong, it'll always be wrong. Two years ago, we got the video, we got the school channel back. Right now, you can watch the Bartlett game and basketball and I don't know what else, graduation. So what are they doing with our equipment? We don't know, because there's no teacher. There's nobody to teach them anything up there. So we've been running three shows over and over again on the school channel for six months. I just watched the Bartlett game again. We keep winning, but the station is losing. So let's all get together and make, let's make this TV as great as I envisioned it. I envisioned it, and I've got what I envisioned, but now it's being taken away. That's okay, but let's not, let's not take it away from our kids. We want kids to go to this new school, let's build a studio, and let's build it right. I'd like to be the first one to sing up there.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to table this. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No?
Madam Chair.
Just one quick question.
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, but you can go first.
No, go ahead.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I will be voting in favor of tabling this motion, and it's because, I did go to the cable committee meeting this past week, and this did not come up for vote at the cable committee meeting, because they did not know precisely what equipment they had to purchase for this, and I think that this is a conversation I would like to have with the cable committee, and I'd like the opportunity to be able to do that before voting on it. Thank you.
Through you to the manager, to somebody from the cable side, do we know offhand when the next cable meeting is? If it's a time-sensitive thing? Obviously, we're kind of, if we're incumbent upon, if we're reliant on their vote either way, I'm just curious as to when, timeline-wise, how that's working?
We can, through you, Madam Chair.
About 22:00, 16:00.
Yeah, we can, through you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Certainly, we can schedule and request a meeting be scheduled earlier. Obviously, it's a 48-hour notice. You know, just in terms of, you know, it's nice that you've had a few laugh lines, but, you know, I think it's an insult that we built a $75 million school. The people that built it had exceptional capabilities. They've built numerous schools with cable studios in it. So, you know, this isn't a question of competency, this isn't a question about the studio not knowing what it is, not knowing where it goes. It's in there, it's already mostly under construction. We've come somewhat tight on the budget, and we're looking for resources to make the, get to the final place. So what we're talking about is just getting some final equipment to plug in there. Because it is coming out of money that was given for a capital purpose for school equipment, we will go through the details. But I don't think holding this up tonight makes really a lot of sense. We certainly, it's the cable committee does, is responsible for the budget and how it's spent, as well as myself, that we will keep that budget in line, and I have the utmost confidence in the school business manager that, you know, he will work cooperatively with us to make sure that we get the equipment that's needed. But the studio is there, it's been designed, I've seen several of them in operation, designed by the design team that put together this high school project, have the utmost confidence that they know what they're doing. And here, we're just a few pieces of equipment short that we need to get there. So this is kind of the final stages in a process. In terms of the school selecting staff, you know, I think everybody knows that they're trying to transition, they're trying to accomplish a lot of things, and this is one of those things that they need to accomplish. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Council McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've heard two things that just disturbed me a little bit. One phrase was unfair characterization that this is last minute. We had Mr. Cantara, who's been working with the cable, as far as I can recall, for at least the last year, if not more, who made a statement that we have equipment that exists already, that's not been used up at the current high school. And then we had the business manager, who's very much on the top of his game, I've seen him since he's been on the job. him since he's been on the job in the school committee meetings, but he even himself attested to the fact that he didn't know whether it was digital or analog. And then we had the previous cable access director who came up and basically said it was all digital. And I, you know, if I give somebody approval to either use a used car or give them tacit approval to go out and buy a new car, they're going to forget about looking at the used car, and they're going to go and look at the new car. And I just don't think it's right to go against what should be the protocol, is what, when you have something, a committee that's supposed to look at something, we don't let a subcommittee vote on something after we've already approved it, then why are we going to do it with another outside committee? I understand the time delays. Again, this is a large sum of money. I still don't think it's right to take sixty thousand dollars of capital. That's really for the ratepayers, for the cable system, when we already have the existing equipment, which we've heard three people basically say, that should be inventoried and assessed to see if it can be moved up there and used. And so I ask this council to table this until, so that to me is proper fiduciary oversight and our responsibility. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Clements?
Thank you. Through you to the town manager. Mr. Manager, wasn't there a discussion at one time when you were looking at the cost of, for instance, a studio, that potentially we weren't even going to be able to put a studio in there, that MSBA and all that, we weren't even sure how we were going to be able to offer this? Is that not a fact, or maybe misinterpretation on my part? I want to make sure it's very clear that you've managed to incorporate something into this school that originally in the design phase was kind of a dream, so to speak, or just a nice idea, but not really.
That's correct. We had to have MSBA agree to put in the different elements to have a classroom. Secondly, the budget that was part of the cable license renewal, which is now at least a year or two old, probably a year old, included in it, because the charter people asked us, what are you going to use this hundred thousand dollars' worth of capital for? And Ted Dubsky did up a budget of sixty thousand dollars. So it's not a coincidence that the sixty thousand is there, because sixty thousand out of the hundred thousand that was voted a year ago was specifically for this purpose. So you know, I said what I wanted to say. It's definitive in terms of, it's not something that's new, it's something that was in the budget, that was presented to charter, the Cable Committee voted on the budget, the Cable Committee voted the sixty thousand, and now we're at the time in which we're actually going to spend it, and I'm requesting the council, let's authorize and just go ahead and spend what we said we were going to do in the first place. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And just to follow up to that, I do not see the concern that fellow counselors may have. We've, the motion is to appropriate up to sixty thousand dollars, also to be approved by Cable Committee. And I can understand the cart before the horse mentality that they're using. But the reality is, it's up to sixty thousand, it's on the approval of the Cable Committee, and to hold this out as we are trying to finish up a multimillion-dollar project here to get these kids in and get them, get them where they need to be this September, I think is irresponsible at this late hour. So I would say that this has got oversight, it's got approval by the Cable Committee, and all we're doing is saying, there are some funds, this is where it's coming from, previously budgeted, previously approved. I don't see the holdup here, and I would support moving forward with this vote and not tabling it.
No, sir. You've had your two times, and no, we're going to move ahead.
She's changing the subject.
No, sir. Sir?
Yes.
I said no.
Why?
And that's because you've had two bites at the apple.
Could a counselor ask why? I can't speak.
Because I just answered you. It's now, we're going to take a vote. If no other members of the council, you have something further, Counselor?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cantara?
Yes.
You had stated, when you were up here, that you were comfortable with what Mr. Clark had stated to you, that we're going to vote on this contingent upon your recommendation from your committee. And you said you didn't have a problem with that, that you're comfortable with that, correct?
Correct. I do have one comment. As far as the sixty thousand dollars is concerned, that was never brought up in the Cable Committee meeting that Mr. Dubsky requested. We can look back in the minutes, but as far as I remember, for as long as I've been on the committee, that is not something the Cable Committee ever voted on. I do want to make it clear, I'm all for the new school. I would love to see them have a good setup and a good studio system up there. In my experience of being in access in twelve-plus years, sixty thousand dollars is way too much money. I know I've been working with Mr. McHugh, and we came up with certain items that came up to lower the budget number. I just, all I'm saying is I hope it does not come up to the full sixty thousand dollars. If I could clarify one thing, is this a one-time thing? So the next, I think the sixth year of the cable contract, we get another hundred thousand dollars of capital money? Okay. So I just want to be clear, and I just want to make sure, I don't want it to sound like I'm not for the new school, I definitely am, I want to, I look forward to work with Mr. Wiggins. I'm just saying, I just want to see the numbers so that we can say, you know, and look at the equipment, because we're certainly not going to tell the school how to spend their money. I certainly wouldn't want the school to come in and say, well, this is what we want, we're going to get this, you know, without some input from at least the Cable Committee and then going through the town council, so that's where at least I stand on that, is as long as it's not up full sixty thousand dollars, you know, and we'd have to lose the money there, too. You start pushing fifty, then, you know, I mean, that's, this is where it starts to hurt. We don't have an exact number, we don't know what it is, it's kind of up in the air right now, and we're just waiting for that number, so. But in short, I would say the vote's going to happen, the vote will happen unless the item gets tabled, but I would just ask for it to be tabled until we have the exact number, so then at that point, there can be a negotiation. And I know time is short, but there is the fact, there is existing equipment. Regardless of whether it's digital or not, a composite signal can be put into a digital and then transferred into a digital feed. This is a relatively inexpensive thing, and without getting too technical, these are issues that can be sorted out. It's not like they'll be stuck in the water with no equipment. There is usable equipment, it can be utilized. And if that's what happens until the time, I mean, what if something happens with the quote coming in, they don't have the items, or they're backordered? You're still going to be in a situation where you will not have the equipment, and this does happen, sometimes you get backordered, you can't get the things, and they're waiting, and they're waiting, and they're waiting. There is a backup plan, so it's not like they'll be out in the water if something doesn't happen right away, in my experience.
Just, Madam Chair, in fairness to Mr. Cantara and to the question that was specifically raised, it was the town special counsel in negotiations for the cable contract that said that we have to provide some justification for why we're asking for two hundred thousand dollars in capital costs to be given to the town. And I had requested from the Cable Committee two members to represent them in the negotiations, and it was Mr. Dupree and Mr. Dubsky that represented them, and they were the ones that had assured me that the sixty thousand was related to the school and provided evidence to that fact. Neither one of those gentlemen are now affiliated with us, but in fairness to Mr. Cantara, he wasn't at that discussion, but I knew that as part of the negotiations, we were specifically requested, if we're giving you two hundred thousand dollars, what are you going to use it for? And we had to provide some justification, and that justification was sixty thousand dollars for the cable studio. So when I speak to the commitment being made early on, that's what I'm referring to, that we had a contractual commitment in our negotiations with charter, that we would spend sixty thousand dollars, or up to sixty thousand, to put towards the school project.
Okay, Counsel. All right. Awesome.
Hello, my name is Pam LaRue. I'm at present the longest sitting member on the Cable Access Advisory Committee, prior to Mr. Dupree, that was there for many years, more than myself. Basically, what I want to state is that Mr. Ayau, myself, we're on vacation, we're not informed, he's in Hawaii right now. We cannot really decide on this until we have a cohesive plan. I worked for fifteen years in broadcasting, I have a degree in broadcasting. I went to an accredited college, I learned from an accredited teacher. That was how I got my job, is because I learned from an accredited teacher. We need to have someone that's accredited to be able to teach these kids and to give them their accreditation. If it's just a club, why are we giving out sixty thousand dollars? I do not know. But I am leaving at this present time, because I am highly irritated at this moment for all this.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
Counsel spoke about, because the Cable Committee person was able to agree with you about voting contingently prior to sending it back to the lower body. So that's why you have those, it's a good idea, a timely idea to give out those handbooks. You can't do that. You're presupposing the vote. Let it go down, table it, let it go back to the committee, let it be handled right. The pond is too dirty already.
Thank you. Okay, can we please have a roll call on the vote to table this agenda item?
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
No.
Counselor Langivan?
No.
Counselor Makuchi?
No.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yeah, yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Nope.
Four yes, five no.
Okay. Again, bring it back up. Vote to authorize the school business manager to enter into contracts for the purchase of equipment related to the media center and the media classroom for the middle high school in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, with said funding to come from two sources. One, school technology budget up to sixty thousand dollars, and two, cable committee capital fund in the amount up to sixty thousand dollars. Said amount to also be approved by the Cable Committee. And we had a second? Can we have a roll call, please?
We never amended the motion.
I was hoping we could amend it to say up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, with said funding to come from two sources.
It's up to the sixty thousand.
Okay, we're going to waste a little more time, and I need a vote on motion and a second to vote, to amend this amendment, to this vote to say, in the amount, the second part of it, to cable committee capital fund in the amount up to sixty thousand dollars, said amount to also be approved by the Cable Committee. Can I get that motion, please? Do I get a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
All right. Well, the vote's out there with the amended vote, the amended item is up there. I've got a second, a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, can I have a roll call on this, please?
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
No.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Abstain.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Six yes, two no, one abstain.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number fourteen, vote to ratify the agreement between Jennifer A. Reynolds and the town of Southbridge for aerobics classes for citizens aged sixty at the community center. One hundred and forty-four classes over the course of one year in the amount of six thousand dollars payable in forty-eight weekly payments of one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Agenda item number fifteen, vote to ratify amendment number five between the town of Southbridge and Veolia Water North America for continued wastewater treatment facilities and operations maintenance services beginning August first, two thousand twelve, through July thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, in accordance with the terms of the agreement attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Langivan?
Yes.
Counselor Makuchi?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Pellequin?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Regis?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Makuchi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you at the last council meeting, I had requested that we have a presentation on the process for counselors and citizens on the trash violations and how that's handled. And I just want to bring it up again, so it's a reminder.
Yeah, we actually do have some of the material, I'll put it together. I've been kind of waiting a little bit for the council to get themselves organized for the subcommittees, but we'll put that to the, kind of the top of the list, so when we have a EHS subcommittee, we'll bring the material in.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Is this something you wanted in a subcommittee meeting?
No, no, I wanted it at a council.
You wanted it as part of a presentation?
I thought, just to be clear, I know that the council members had received a letter, I cannot remember the individual's name, but from an individual about one of the trash fines, trash fees, fines, and that that was distributed to all members of the council. And my recollection was that you had brought up an issue about what transpired in terms of that individual and what went into that. What I've done is I've actually investigated that specific complaint to find out the details regarding that, and that's what I was going to bring back. Is that the intent?
I appreciate that, Mr. Clark, really, I do.
Okay.
I think that was a letter that I had just received from somebody.
Yes, because we didn't receive two. Actually, Madam Chair received one, two, that was addressed specifically to her and then also to myself as town manager. So I had both of them looked at, and I'm happy to present the findings on both of those.
I was just, that's fine.
Okay.
I was just hoping at some point if we could have a representative here, just so the people, the citizens of Southbridge can understand.
Sure.
The process, that's all. Thank you.
Is that it? That's it?[1627.41]
and go through items in that letter and the materials. I think I did it with him, and probably took a half hour, 45 minutes to go through the different material, but instead of having, you know, a tremendous amount of staff time consumed with a request of that nature, I would much rather have people on the street and people out doing their jobs instead of trying to put together these requests.
So there's no lists of, like, there's no list of vehicles owned by the police department?
I think we, actually, some of that material, I thought we put in the package, that material is, I believe, some of that was in, if it's not, it will be in shortly, the vehicles isn't a problem. But training records for every member of the department without a specific timeline given, you know, technically, you know, I mean, that could be 100 years' worth of records, and I'm not being flippant, but how do I know? So, you know, we sent the material over to the chief to start putting the materials together, but it's a lot of material, and I have a sample, you're welcome to come by the office, you know, as original documents, I would suggest people just look at them. But if there's specific items in there, you know, I'm happy to sit down with any member of the council to go through what I found and to go through what the process is for how police officers are trained. I think the chief is more than adequate to address any of those issues, and I would encourage a discussion with the chief, instead of voluminous requests that are going to bog down departments.
Oh, yeah, I haven't called you yet, but it's on my to-do list, but yes. But any information that you have assembled and disseminated to anybody in the council, I would be interested in seeing as well, it's just that...
Yeah, on the vehicles and the small ones that we can easily accommodate, no problem, on the ones that are too voluminous, we'll see if we have another alternative way.
Okay, great. My next thing was, I received in my packet memo to the liquor board dated July 26th, entitled "Cancellation Request of Four Liquor Licenses According to MGL Chapter 138, Section 77: Cancellation of Licenses on Cessation License's Business." And this was very, this is a very good memo, there's lots of information here, there's two pages from your office, there's a legal opinion, there's charts, census figures, four pages of color photographs, there's lots of information here. My, and I don't really want to go into the substantive discussion of what you actually wrote in the memo, my primary concern was, I have a copy of the meeting agenda for the liquor board meeting last week, and it was amended on July 23rd, which was three days before the meeting, and there's only three license holders listed on the meeting agenda, even though there is a discussion of four license holders in the memo that went out at the meeting, and I'm kind of confused as to how that's not a violation of the open meeting law, considering all four licenses were discussed at the meeting.
Madam Chair, I believe that those, was an update on the status of those licenses? Is that what the...
Right, but the meeting agenda for the liquor board discusses, it's item, there's number seven on a specific license, number eight is another specific license, and number nine is yet another license, but there's four licenses discussed in the memo, and there were four licenses discussed at the meeting, and I think that if the fourth license holder had known that they were going to be the topic of substantive discussion about their liquor license, they would have made more of an effort to attend the meeting.
Yeah, I think that, through you, Madam Chair, I think that there's an element of confusion. There was an action taken by the liquor board that they contemplated a review of three, well, actually, it was originally five, but of licenses that were not in operation, understanding that Chapter 138, Section 77 says that you shall not have licenses not in operation, and we had five, that in not even a strict, not even a strict interpretation of the law, but the law technically is not in compliance. So what I alerted the liquor board to was that an action needs to be taken. They would not have necessarily had that on the agenda, nor was it a formal discussion at that point. The purpose of my showing up to that meeting was to inform them that their own self-imposed deadline was up, and that now would be the appropriate time to schedule a formal hearing so that folks are entitled to due process and that the material would be sent out, and that's exactly what happened, and due process will be followed. Hopefully, we can, you know, meet with the individual owners and see if we can get these licenses operational, because really, the intent is to have operational liquor licenses as opposed to pocket licenses, which are strictly prohibited by law. So there's no, I mean, certainly, you know, this council, members of this council have filed, you know, complaints with the public records people and the open meeting law people. I don't think that there was any, you know, asking them to schedule a meeting to formally hold a public hearing. They heard that suggestion and a formal notice, and the agenda will be done appropriately, but there was no action taken other than to schedule an upcoming event. So in my opinion, there was no violation of open meeting law to ask them to schedule a future event.
I just, I think if I owned a business or a liquor license or, you know, anything in town, and I was going to be the subject of conversation at a meeting, I would like to think that I would be on the agenda and not, I don't mean to belabor the point.
And they will.
Okay. Also, at the meeting, one of the license holders who did attend the meeting asked me about an agenda item relating to his property that was voted upon favorably at the general government subcommittee on March 8th of this year, and I guess it never came before the full council, and I said I would get back to him and find out.
Yeah, the request that was made, and I will honestly have to go back and look, that there was a request made, a general government subcommittee was held for parking, for the town to make available parking, and I know there were some concerns, and I'll just have to go through the minutes to find out why that was taken off, but there were some concerns that had emerged in terms of some of the legalities of honoring the request, and we just simply need to get the material and find out where we are to resurrect that.
Okay, okay. One last thing. This is quick, I promise. One of my first things that I did after being elected to the council is I made a request to review the last two years of executive session meeting minutes, and I had a couple of good conversations with the chair and the manager about this. I'm really excited about the prospect of some of these meeting minutes being released to the public, events, subjects that are no longer actively being worked on and have been settled by the council are open to being released by the public, and I guess that generally, this is something that municipal bodies are not great at doing, so I'm really excited to hear that Southbridge is going to be doing some of this. As anybody who knows me knows transparency is something that means a lot to me. But I just wanted to make sure, because it seems like there's some sort of, a little bit of confusion about what I was requesting, I mean, I think it's so great that we're reviewing this information for public release, but my request was to review all of the executive session meeting minutes from the last couple of years, not just stuff that's available for public release, but all of it, and I just want to make sure that everybody was on the same page about my request.
Speak. Thank you. Thank God, such a fault. Hi. Okay, when we talked, if you recall, I said that I have to look into whether we can do all of this, of the executive session subcommittee meetings, including things that have not been resolved, because I'm not sure that, as not a sitting member of the council at the time, you can have access to that material. I've asked the manager to look into that with our town attorney and see if it's possible. I've also asked his admin to start bringing some of the material out, we're going to have to review it, the council is going to have to look at it, because the council has to vote on whether to release the material. It's usually information that's been resolved, that's allowed to come forward. The only thing I'm concerned about, counselor, is whether or not we can provide to you information that has not been resolved, as you were not a member of the council at the time it was on. So that's what we're looking into in terms of that piece. I understand what you're looking for.
Right.
So we're on the same page.
Okay, okay. I've been advised that I am legally entitled to look at this, but if you want to check to make sure, I'd, right, I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, that's all for me tonight.
Counselor Vandal?
I have one request through you.
No, sir, this is counselor's forum now, we're not, it's not a debate time, I'm sorry. This is strictly the council.
No.
No, no.
No.
I'm afraid not. This is counselor's forum, I'm sorry.
I have one request through you, Madam Chair, to the town manager. Streets and sidewalks, the vegetation growing between the sidewalks and in the gutters and stuff, is getting out of hand, so I would like to see them, you know, take, look into the matter and kind of take care of it. Thank you, that's all I have.
It just, I know we're doing that, and I think there was a couple addresses that were given to me before, and I think the next morning, which made me look really good, they were scheduled to be done, and we're done, but if there are certain areas, please let me know, and we'll do what we can do to them.
Well, you know, they can take a ride around, and they can, you know, find some areas, not too hot to find them. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, you know, I wanted to mention that every year, I think it's fair to point out that the town clerk's office does a great job of compiling the information for us in terms of the charter and the bylaws, the signed bylaws, and the town council rules, and they're handed out traditionally to every counselor, and so I realize what Mr. Satilli's effort was, I think he did a great job, thank you very much, this was very nice, the addition of the state constitution and the federal constitution is a nice addition, he did that out of his own pocket, just want to thank him for that. I am deeply concerned, I really wasn't going to have much to say tonight, other than what I just said, other than some things I just heard, I am deeply concerned, Madam Chair, that this council is not understanding our role, and specifically, I want to point out just the charter, Chapter 2, Section 4, 2-4-1, that says, except as otherwise provided in this charter, all general, corporate, legislative, policymaking, and appropriation powers of the town shall be vested in the town council. In looking at the powers and duties and role of the town manager in Chapter 4, Section 2, 4-2-1, the town manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the town, and shall be directly responsible and accountable to the town council for the effective administration of all town affairs placed in his or her charge by the council or by this charter, and that the manager shall serve as a resource to the council. The council shall provide policy and political leadership to the town, the manager shall bring policy issues to the council to consider in making policy choices, and shall then implement the policies chosen by the council. I just heard your response to Counselor Pellequin in terms of what she wanted to do to be able to effectively do her job. This is a council of nine, not five and maybe four others, this is a council of nine, and we have to be able to effectively do our job. Now, I think it's no secret, because I made it mentioned in the newspaper when I was asked, what I asked for, we had a very serious letter that was given to us, and I don't care how anybody else characterizes it, I think it's important to three specific entities on how this council proceeds forward with that letter, one being the police chief himself, two being the union, or the officers out on the patrol beat, and three being the town citizens. Now, I've asked for information, one of those information requests is training records, which has been characterized as occupying that table. Now, I can assure you, I think we have been in the computer age in Southbridge for a good number of years. I was the training chief, and I was the deputy fire chief of an organization that had 72 firefighters. I think it's incumbent to find out what the minimum requirements are that we, whether or not we're meeting them, those set by the standards of the Mass Training Council, Community Justice Training Council, those that are set by general law, and those that are set by recommended bodies, that's only prudent for us to do, so that we're showing our due diligence. To characterize it as being voluminous and not being able to be obtained, I can get a college transcript of what I took in four years, 120 semester hours on two pieces of paper, and I know that if I was requested to provide training records for firefighters, even for firefighters in the state, when I was the director of the Mass Training, Mass Fire Training Academy, I could provide that information, and I can assure you, it wouldn't take 1,500 pages like I was told. So to characterize it like that, I'm a little bit taken aback and a little bit disappointed in that, and I think we, I made my point and illustrated there, and that's about all I have to say on the subject, in fairness to all those three bodies that I mentioned and this council. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Moriarty?
Just a couple of quick things, more or less just plugging a few different things. As far as Relay for Life, there's some fundraisers coming up, one is a football tournament this weekend at Henry Street, those who are interested, let me know. Gary McKinstry, who some may know, local, out of Dudley, local medium psychic, is going to do a show with us in early September as well. And then also, before tonight's meeting, I had an informal meeting with a few different folks regarding some frustration that a resident had in terms with her daughter's experience at the middle school in terms of athletics and the lack of a softball program in town, so we're trying, you know, more or less, I guess, for those who are interested as far as helping out or playing, from the gentleman from ASA, it sounded as if they would take kids up to 18, Walter Byrd was at the meeting, you're, okay? So up to, yeah, eight to 18, so any girls interested in fast pitch, contact myself or I guess Walter or whatever, we have a few different people that were interested in setting something up, and I figured I'd use this venue to help promote that and provide that outlet for those kids, and at this moment, I'll leave it at that.
Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On a monthly note here, we've got town cleanup going on, usually Monique Manor would come up and make a comment, but she's unavailable this evening, so I'm going to mention that on this Saturday, August 4th, there is a town cleanup effort going on. You can meet at 9:00 AM at the Wells parking lot if you would like to join in making your town a better place and setting a good example for those who reside here, perhaps we'll teach those, others who choose to litter a thing or two and do some good works as we do this every month. You can bring your own gloves, we do provide some rubber gloves, we also provide trash bags, and we just spend a couple of hours or so going over the main areas of the town. We also have water for you and usually a snack, so if you would like to join in, please meet up at 9:00 AM at Wells parking lot, the Wells School, Middle School parking lot on Marcy Street, and we will do our best to make the town look better. That also, obviously, if it's a rainy, poory day, usually if it's sprinkling, we still do our job, but if not, then, you know, we might cancel due to very inclement weather, otherwise we try to do our best. I also just want to mention, I know you were very generous in your thanks earlier, Madam Chair, but I want to recognize just a few people who helped out, you know, the community center is something that's really great here in this town, and a number of years ago, it was brought, the issue of the windows came up in terms of energy efficiency and all that good stuff, and then there were some actual, even more issues that came up as we looked into this, and I want to thank our chief, Dan Sharet, who brought this to our attention when we were working on getting the floor done a number of years ago, and it just kind of sat there for a while, and then last year, we had a lot of events happen that that community center was used quite a bit, it was used for tornado, it was used for hurricane, and then it was used for snowstorm, and after that, seeing how many people were, besides the fact that it is our senior center now, having been replaced with the registered motor vehicles in the center of town, and the Los Americas folks use it, and not to mention everybody else, so the importance of getting, enhancing that building energy efficient wise to save taxpayers' monies on the heating costs, and then the health issues in terms of, there was, you know, a little mold on those windows and a few other concerns that came to our attention in the process, and it just made sense that we should try to do something. So a number of businesses came together and committed to this town and provided for this town, and for those who use that building pretty much 24 hours a day, according to Mike Trombley. So I want to thank the generosity of the people out there who did commit financially and physically, especially physically, we had Ed Trainer, who's helped us for the past few years on lights for our Christmas tree, while he was out there also boarding up those windows every evening, because we actually had to do some of the work ourselves to keep the price down, and I want to thank the chief, who came out a couple of nights and also helped us with that project, my family, I hate to put you guys on the spot, but my husband, my son-in-law, Clark, and my father, who also showed up and screwed in the plywood so that the building was secure in the evening, and Menard Glass, who did the project for us, could come in and put those windows in the morning. Everybody just pulled together, especially also Mike Trombley, who put up with that one week of chaos, and Jose, the new maintenance, and I'm not sure his exact title, but I would be, it would be wrong to overlook him, because he came in early to provide early entrance for the workers, and he sometimes stayed late when they wanted to get the job done, it was a hot week. So I thank all those people who came together and really did a great job, this was at no cost to the town, I could say that, well, with the exception of the DPW taking window sills off and putting blinds back, that was really the only cost to the town. So again, kudos to those who funded this project and worked on it, small portion for me, big kudos to those who really pulled it together and made it happen, and so take a look at them, it's a wonderful addition to our community, and it not only enhances it aesthetically, but obviously efficiently, and it's a good asset for the community to use for many years to come, so thanks to everybody who put up with that process while it was going on. That's it. 9:00 AM, if you're looking to join us to pick up trash, 9:00 AM, Saturday morning, of course, if you can't make nine, show up somewhere along 10, pick up a bag from somebody on the street, we usually do main, both sides, Hamilton, center, central, we do as much as we can with the bodies we have, sometimes a few, sometimes many, so we encourage you to come out, bring your kids, it's a good lesson for them to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Agenda item number 17 is the discussion of our next meeting date, looking Monday, August 13th, 7:00 PM, again, here in the Piapi Room at this point, unless anything changes, we will be here. All right, and agenda number 18 is adjournment. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned, thank you.
week of chaos, and Jose, the new maintenance, and I'm not sure his exact title, but I would be, it would be wrong to overlook him, because he came in early to provide early entrance for the workers, and he sometimes stayed late when they wanted to get the job done. It was a hot week. So I thank all those people who came together and really did a great job. This was at no cost to the town. I could say that, well, with the exception of the DPW taking window sills off and putting blinds back, that was really the only cost to the town. So again, kudos to those who funded this project and worked on it.